Continue this expense.
Called this meeting as council to order this night, February 5th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
I would like an executive session to discuss employee performance.
For how long?
Uh, ten minutes. Employee performance.
That's the reason?
Doesn't have to look just.
No.
No, it's personality.
Okay. Anything else? Will you approve agenda? John?
I'm sorry?
Do I just go ahead and make the motion to approve the additions to the agenda right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I get a motion for additions of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. You have a first and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Opposed four oh. Okay. Citizens comments? No citizens comments? Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, January 15th, 2019. Appropriations ordinance number two, five, one, nine, in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four and twenty-eight cents, and petty cash of one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Passes four oh.
John, I have a question.
Yep.
Does Mark vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not the mayor, he's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Make sure.
Yeah. Okay. Department heads. Grant administrator Lisa Cornwell is not here tonight. Do we have anything from her?
I haven't heard from her. I know that the guys have been working with her with the.
We have a total on the signs.
Okay.
Whenever she's ready.
Okay.
And I can get ahold of her.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Police chief report. Chief Pede.
I'll have a couple things. Number one, anticipation of the dog ordinance being passed, we went ahead and purchased a chip reader for the dogs. Though we have that on hand. We've already used it a couple of times. It's going to work out pretty good for us. Like I said, so that's already been taken care of. The other thing, I would like permission to outfit the patrol truck that we currently have with a half cage, double gunlock, and running boards. All those are officer safety slash the safety issues all the way around, getting people loaded in and out of the truck. The total is one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's installed, all parts, everything, with Tim Bate doing the project for us. Breaks down, it breaks down to six ninety-five for the half cage, and that's a brand-new cage. Double gunlock, four hundred dollars, and running boards are two hundred dollars. I know right now, when I talk to him about timeline, he's kind of busy, and one of his guys is out, so it could be a month or so. I'm anticipating that that could change, but that's over my spending limit, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys as attention.
Have any questions for Chief Pede regarding this?
I'd make a motion to approve the twelve hundred and ninety-five for half cage, double gunlock, and running boards for the truck.
Double gunlock is just so you can put your guns in there and lock them up so nobody gets them? Is that?
Yeah, that way we have a lock to lock up the shotgun that we currently have in each vehicle and the rifle, just to keep them secure better than what they are currently.
Good. Yeah. That half cage and that pickup going to be a little bit bigger than what the car is? Maybe a little bit more easier to use?
Yes. The car has what they consider a third cage. The price for the third cage versus half is the same, identical same price, just with getting bigger people and stuff, it just makes it a whole lot easier to get people in and out of.
Yeah.
And like I said, that's brand-new, custom-built for that truck.
Seems a lot cheaper.
It was a lot cheaper than the third of the cage that you guys put in the car.
Okay. I have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Four oh.
That's all I have for you guys.
Thank you. Great. Any questions for Chief?
No.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Next on the agenda, fire chief, not here. Jamie, city clerk.
Um, there's a group, I've talked to you guys about it before, that's starting young professionals for Stafford County. They're next. Get-together is March 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00, over at the gathering place in Stafford. Just so you guys are aware, it's a neat little thing for the younger people. I think they said forty-ish. I mean, we can't be too picky with ages around here, so the more the merrier. I just wanted to help spread the word for that. Um, I don't remember the lady's name, came in and asked today. She works, I think, for the conservation. They're talking about planting a tree for memorial for Mr. Witt, from what I understand, and they were kind of talking about asking if we wanted to do it in the parks or whatever, and I just told her that we didn't have a forester anymore, so I would get ahold of you guys to see if you care what park, or where, who, when, why.
I would just.
I'd work that out.
See if you have any problems, work it out with. Can't help but make sure location work.
We've got some that need to come out in North Park, that might be the place to put it back, so I'll get ahold of them.
I don't know if we had to do anything special since it was a memorial tree, or?
So you'll get ahold of them, John?
I'll get ahold of them.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else here? Okay. Do anybody have any questions for Jamie? Okay. Moving on. City superintendent Jeff Williams.
We're scooting right along, aren't we?
Yes, indeed.
The only thing that I have, and some of you that have been on the council a while will remember this, that two years ago, the state mandated us to put a downspout on that water tower. At the time, it was after the budgets had already been set, the money was really not available to do it last year, and we do have the money in it this year, and I found, the first price I got was over sixteen thousand dollars, and I've got a guy that I've dealt with for years, I bought Coolantar paints and epoxies and stuff from him, and he also, he's a part-owner in a company that does rework on towers, and his price to do it, ninety-three fifty. So it was about half of what the first quote we had. This is not something that I begged for. I put it off as long as I can, but it's a state mandate. We really don't have a lot of choice. We can, but the fine will probably be worse than what the repair on the tower is. So we've had one warning already. You get two before the fines come, so if the council wishes to do it now, why, we've got money in the, in the, in the water fund to be able to do it, so.
And it does just fix it. How high is it?
It goes, it goes clear to where the overflow comes out of the tower now. If you look up kind of on the north side, and it goes over to the leg, and it comes down within three feet of the ground. So it goes about eighty feet. It's made, it's supposed to be, they don't supply the pad to splash on if it does run over, but just the, just the piping and the labor to get it down, so.
Oh, so they're putting on eighty feet, right?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet.
Okay.
It's about eighty feet.
About eighty feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm assuming you guys will go back in and pour splash pad underneath of it?
Yeah, I think we should. We don't have that happen very often, but once in a while, but if it comes out there, it's going to make a horrible mess, so yeah, we'll try and get some concrete underneath it once it's done, when we know where it's at. Try and get it aimed somewhere where it kind of feather out, out in that grass, so. I don't, I don't expect to do it probably until it warms up, but I don't know what his schedule will be, so.
Sounds like something we have to do, pretty much.
So basically, you've gotten two quotes then, one earlier on and?
From the company that does the maintenance on our tower. This guy originally was affiliated with them, and he got the opportunity to buy part of this business, and so he's kind of a competitor, even though I have a contract with the other guys to do the maintenance on it. That's, that only, that only occurs just what the regular maintenance on the tower is when they inspect it, so. This was a little over half of what the first one was. I felt pretty good about it. And we've got some thin roof on there too. We're going to look it over at the next inspection, but it won't be until next year, and there's probably going to have to be some repair done then, but we'll try and tuck some money back where we can. That roof's a hundred years old. I mean, it's done really well, but it has got some pinholes in it and some of that stuff, but we'll look at that when the time comes next year, so. This is really all we need to do to satisfy the state for now, so, anyway.
Make a motion to spend ninety-three hundred and fifty dollars with Viking Industrial Painting, put a downspout on the water tower.
Second that motion? So, motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes four oh.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. City attorney, John?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Nothing for the mayor's report? Okay. Old business. Ordinance ten fifty-nine dash nineteen, dog breed.
If you look at the second page under paragraph two, that second paragraph is, is the addition requiring.
The microchip?
Microchip. Right. I'm assuming it works for Jim.
Yeah.
Hear anything from him.
Okay. Have any other questions regarding this? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number ten fifty-nine dash nineteen.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Passes four oh.
All right. The second ordinance allows, but does not establish the collection of additional monthly fee for the maintenance of the dumpster. So essentially, what you would do is, if still considering, would adopt this ordinance, and then at some point in the future, if you want to pass a resolution to establish the monthly fee, you can at that time.
So this is basically putting it in place that we can do it?
Right. It has to go into effect, it has to be published, so you could adopt that resolution at the next meeting. I have not prepared it, but.
Right.
If instructed, I can do so.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of people tell me after we rid the dumpster, you know, they like to use it. It wouldn't have a problem with man, dollar bid too. It's worth it to some people. No.
You're not going to make everybody happy.
No, no.
And there's people taking down trash and putting them in the dumpsters, holding up the signs anyways, so.
Jeff, can we get more cameras down there?
At this point in time where we drop those dumpsters, we really don't have a way to put anything else in there, and it kind of depends on where they skid it off too, you know? You know, used to, my guys that go down there and look up in there every day, I mean crawl up in there and make sure that there was a trash. We haven't done that, right or wrong, you know, I don't know. It seems like sometimes they're worse than others. Of course, we just went through Christmas holiday, and, and when the wind comes up and blows forty mile an hour, you know, if we can catch it quick enough, we've got, we keep a tarp down there to tarp it. We call it in, sometimes it's a week before they come and get it, you know? And what happens is people get to dropping stuff beside it. I mean, they'll just whip up there, and they'll just drop it right beside there, paint cans, all kinds of stuff, and just drive off. And unless we go back through the camera and catch every one of them, you know, why, sometimes it's more of a problem than others. Sometimes it's all building material. Sometimes it's all cardboard, you know, it's just, it's a dumpster. I mean, that's, it is what it is.
Could we look into just a system just for the dumpster? Would you look into getting, purchasing another system that would, that you could only record it with activity, so it's not tied into everything else?
Sure. Be glad to.
Get a price on that?
Yep. Yep. I mean, if we need to set a pole out there.
That's what I'm saying, set a pole.
And shine down. Sure. That's what we do out, that's what we do out at the tree site, and we shoot it in from out there, you know?
But find something that only records when it's.
When it has movement.
Movement.
Something with a motion detector would be good.
Sure. Sure. Be glad to.
And then you wouldn't be necessarily looking through.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes if it's on a weekend, you can sit there for two or three hours going through that before you get through two or three days, so.
The other thing I'd like to go ahead and check on is what it would cost to build a forty by sixty or whatever fence to put them in.
Open on both ends and then open them, lock them?
I'd like a price on it anyway.
Sure. Sure.
Then what's the plan, just to open it in the beginning of the day, end of the day?
Open it in the morning, shut it at the end, and if they need in after hours, they can get ahold of dispatch, and I mean, if that's the route we choose to go.
You know, I was, I was in Stafford a week or so ago, and I got to asking the guys, because they have a dumpster over there. David, you know, I drink coffee with David about every morning, he told me, their sets behind the power plant, but their power plant's fenced, and they open it when they come to work, and it gets shut at 3:30.
And then if you need it after hours?
And it is not open on the weekends. It's only open Monday.
I think they'll let them in.
If somebody calls, they'll let them in, but otherwise, it's locked up on the weekends, and it sets up behind the building.
Yeah.
I mean, it's close enough that you can see what's in it, so, you know, we can all, all call and see, we'll kind of lay it out, because we'd have to have room to be able to drop one.
Right.
Pick one up, so whether sixty-foot would be quite enough.
I don't know.
We'll do some measuring and see.
What I was thinking was to have basically a post where one camera could face east, one could face west, to where if people decided to go the other way, you could still get a tag number and stuff from that way.
Sure.
Or, well, that would get at least the traffic though, but if we have to do two posts pointing in, but at the same time, get with the Andrew brothers, and maybe spread the asphalt like on a permanent spot, and tell them, you know, from this barrel to this barrel, make sure that that dumpster's in here for the camera reasons.
It's, it's not them that sets it. It's, it's Stone that sets it, and.
Or whoever, I mean, just where they understand between the two barrels is where cameras.
I mean, most, most generally, the guys, they put them butt to butt when they set them. They drop one, he swings around, picks the other one up.
So they don't, they don't decide by side?
They're not really strung out. They don't set side by side, just at the end of the end. You know, we'll look over some stuff and see what we can do. Eventually, I would like to take that old wellhouse down, work out something with Jim where we can get it down, that it helps us see that much more. When it gets set behind there, a lot of times we don't see it. You know, it's got some other reasons why we'd like to have it down. It kind of messes with the caterpillar when it runs, when it's hot, so we're, I'll work out a deal with Jim, because they used to put cats in it. It's, it's in the state of disrepair right now. Hasn't had any in it in a long time, so we'll, we'll do some looking, and I'll call, I'll call Wally up at Great Bend, have Wally look at it, see what he thinks. He's down here pretty regular, and see what chain link costs for that, and maybe we could set it high enough where it'll kind of catch that material and it wouldn't. I mean, we, and I apologize, I mean, we've had it strung out all over.
At least if it was in fence, if it did start, if there was something in there that blew out of it, and not go clear over to somebody else's property.
I mean, if nothing else, maybe we could put a net over the top of it, because he doesn't pick them up high. I mean, they skid them out of there, you know, so. Might be a deal, we'd get like an oilfield net for tanks or something, you know, that you can keep that trash contained down in there. It'd be a whole lot easier to pick up.
I mean, I think, I think, I think in the cameras would be the answer, but if, if we wrote down what's as far as fines, we need somewhere to write down what the fine would be if they broke those rules, because we don't have anything that says.
That would have to be something, you'd have to establish an ordinance.
Because we need to have something that tells people.
Sure.
Jamie, do you think you could find something regarding any type of fines into what Lisa is talking about, and then maybe we can talk about it next meeting? Okay.
I mean, we don't have, I don't think there's any rules as far as anything that's written down as far as what can you go in there.
So we just make something, or what? Because there has to be a consequence.
We have a sign there that tells what we take and what we don't take. You know, I mean, it's, it's pretty plain, it's in English and Spanish both.
But there's nothing on it that states fines.
That's just kind of.
No, no fines.
That's just kind of a regulation, and the ordinance allows you to adopt regulation, but there, I mean, there's.
So there's no consequences? If I go in there and throw twenty tires in there, nothing's going to happen?
Well, if we catch you, we're going to make you come get them, you know, or we'll fine you. I mean, we have caught guys throwing tires in and made them come get them, and I think, and I don't remember, I don't think we've done anything since Jim's been here, but I think before, the fine was a hundred bucks on those tires.
I think that if we had some type of fine, like you say he's talking about, then you might deeter a few people.
Yeah.
Not everyone.
No, but you could, you might be able to slow it down, you know?
Right.
We've stopped most of the paint cans, which is a plus, I guarantee.
Except for the ones that are in the can that says, this is not what you're supposed to put in here.
Exactly.
I almost went looking, but I didn't.
All right. We still have.
I'll try and take care of it, get back with you next meeting.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. We still have the ordinance to discuss. Anybody have any problems with this?
No.
Okay. Entertained motion?
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion and a second? All those in favor? All those against? And four oh. And you were calling this ordinance ten fifty-nine twenty?
Ten sixty.
Oh, ten sixty.
Nineteen.
All right. All right. Moving on to new business, water tower.
Jeff, are you?
I've got that.
Got that one? Okay. Cleaning agreement.
So the cleaning agreement for Steve. I have it here somewhere. Basically, it's the same thing.
It's just a yearly agreement, isn't it?
It comes up in February, so I think it's two thirty for City Hall and two seventy for the Whit Center, a month, for six thousand a year.
And getting cleaned good then? You don't have any complaints? Okay. Well, come on!
You're taking way too long to answer that question.
I mean.
Do we need to take other bits? I mean, you're the one that really sees it every day.
I don't know why we have a cleaner, honestly. I mean, I don't know why it was done, how long it's been happening, I don't know. I don't know what happens.
They come in every day, every morning.
I think he comes in at least and takes out the trash. I know he comes in on the weekends, I think, and deep, I don't know what he does, like, I mean.
I think on the weekends, that's when I've seen him up here running the vacuum and running the vacuum upstairs and stuff like that.
I think he vacuums maybe on Saturdays, and then kind of just comes in and tidies up.
Do we have somebody that wants to take care of the Whit Center?
I mean, I don't know. No, I don't.
Can I see that?
We were talking about it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we ain't got somebody that's going to take care of it, I'd just, I'm, I'd just soon keep him cleaning stuff, because I'm sure that he cleans the Whit Center, and after a week of activities over there, and then the skating on Friday and Saturday nights, and, I mean, I'm not going to expect you guys to quit your daily jobs, go over there and clean the place, and, and I'm not going to pay overtime to have you guys go do it on Saturdays and Sundays and.
He probably just, he probably just does like the stairway in this office. I mean, it's not like he goes in Jim's office.
Yeah, he does. He goes to both of our offices, yeah.
Okay.
And the courtroom. He does all of it upstairs, dumps the trash and vacuums it.
Oh.
Hits the top of the dust, you know, and that stuff, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, he's up there.
I don't know if he'd go in there or not, man.
Yeah.
I was going to do a walk, I'm watching the door open, so he couldn't lock it, because I always forget my keys.
Yeah, I don't know.
How much was it per month for just the city office?
Two seventy.
Two thirty.
Yeah, and two seventy for what's in there?
I mean, five hundred dollars a month, everyday cleaning or whatever, I don't have an issue with it.
No problem with that either, so.
I'd make a motion to continue the contract with Steve Schultz for five hundred dollars a month.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Motion passes four oh.
Can we go back for a second?
Yep.
On this side, these dumping regulations, you have, your ordinance allows you to establish regulations, which is simple enough, I mean, it is what it is, you can't deposit stuff that's hazardous and that kind of thing, but your, your ordinance book also provides a general, general penalty for violation of anything that does not have a listed penalty, so if they violated that, those regulations, it could be a fine of up to a thousand dollars, and maybe that's what needs to be posted. I don't know, just thought.
So we've got something in place that we could.
Yeah, I mean, you've, you've always, any violation of your, any ordinance in your ordinance book, there's a fallback, if there's not a specific fine amount, and that fine amount is, or specific, I'm sorry, general.
It's up to a thousand.
It's up to a thousand dollars. And up to one hundred and seventy-nine, seventy-nine days in jail, but.
I'm not paying for that.
Would require you guys to find an attorney to represent the defendant in that case.
I have one thing I forgot I should tell you. The, the contracts for Midwest Energy will be out this week. There's a good chance that Greg's coming out to meet with me the end of the month, but they probably will have to be signed before council meets again. I think they're only required to be signed by the mayor, but Greg and I are going to go through them over the phone and that stuff. We'll do this like we did before, they just require the mayor's signature, so it's not a big deal, it's just a formality, so.
No, no change from what we heard last?
Just the rate went down, yeah. That's, that's it. We did, we did put in, some of the cities requested that there be a, a clause in there if you had any change in your purchase generation. Do you, we have, we have a purchase generation clause in there, we purchase a megawatt a month. Should we decide to get out of that at any time, and we can prove that we don't need it, they'll drop that, they'll drop that charge for that, so all the cities have that access, which is something new, but other than that, it's same contract, so, just a different rate, so, anyway.
All right. We have an executive session here to discuss employee performance for possible hired police department for five minutes. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Who's that to include?
Police chief, or myself, and the council, and Jamie.
John. Everybody.
Check. Everybody.
Have a motion on the table to have a second? Have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Everybody passes.
Motion passes.
Everybody passes.
Four oh. We will resume back at thirty-three.
Thank you.
Call this meeting back to order at seven thirty-three PM.
We want to talk about, I mean, essentially, what you're talking about Marshall is almost like a, almost like a non-compete, essentially what you'd be saying is that either that type of, I don't know what you'd call it, tuition maybe?
Yeah, basically.
Tuition is refunded, or he can't provide those types of services somewhere else for a number, period of time, and, and what happens is, then the department that wants to hire him, subsequent to being here, would pay those tuition expenses, or reimburse.
I thought earlier you said that you don't pay to send, like, you just pay their wages.
Yeah, we, we just pay their, the state says while they're out there, we have to pay their, their wages, and of course, we have to watch, because while they're out there at the academy, they're not allowed to have overtime unless, you know, they're doing overtime at the actual academy, so they couldn't come back here and work, so we would just be out wages, basically.
But that's what I'm saying, I don't want.
Yeah, and I'd have to look to see if there's a statutory prohibition against those types of agreements, but otherwise, it could be done. I don't, I wouldn't have any idea though, how, how much do you think you'd pay him in, pay in wages for somebody that went to the academy?
Monday through Friday.
It's Monday through Friday.
For how many weeks?
It's fourteen weeks. So, you know, I have to do the quick math on that, so.
About seventy-eight hundred dollars for fourteen weeks. Five sixty a week. Fourteen an hour. Seventy-eight hundred dollars, three and a half months.
Yeah.
Do they work, so it's fourteen straight weeks?
Fourteen straight weeks, yeah. Four, fourteen straight weeks, yeah.
Basically, Monday through Friday, and they have the weekends to get off and come home.
Yeah.
And you're not allowed to work them.
We're not allowed to work them. They're not allowed to even volunteer or anything like that, so... And the only, the only time that changes is if they're out there in the academy during, like, a week-long vacation period, like Christmas, uh, Thanksgiving, then we have to bring them back and, uh, work them so that they can get a paycheck, so... That's the only time. There's a few other times during the year that they're out for, for a day or so that they're just out there, so...
We've never done anything like that in the past. You can think of? 'Cause I know that's not the first person that St. John has sent to the academy.
That would be the second person. That would pass at all.
It'd be the second person.
The second person.
That we've sent to the academy?
That I know of.
But with a, not with a contract, though?
No.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if anything, with Chris, I don't know if there was anything ever in place for that.
I don't think, I don't think there was. I mean, outside of a gentleman's agreement, so...
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this guy here. If, if we can do something like an actual contract.
I would, I would like to look at something like that, and I, I guess you need to ask him if he would be okay to that. I mean, I, I'd like to see a year commitment back to the city of St. John if we're gonna pay him for...
And, and that's something I can definitely call and then ask him, say, "Are you willing to do that commitment?" And, you know, worst you can do is say, "Tell me no," and then we move on.
And, uh, the training's free? Or we pay for that?
No, like I said, i- it's based through the state. I mean, five dollars for each ticket that law enforcement writes goes to K L A T C, and then they have some other funding and stuff like that. So the only expense for the city is just for fourteen weeks instead of him, them being physically here, there at the school.
And we're paying them for it.
Yeah, we're paying them to be out there.
When did you, when did you say that next academy class would be?
Right now, at least August. Uh, there's, now, they do have some coming up in, or April and May. Uh, I know, uh, they're putting some people on the waiting list, but last I knew, that waiting list had about thirty officers on it, plus the original sixty in there, so I don't really see that. I would definitely anticipate August, plus that would give us time to get him through his, uh, sixty-day probation period, uh, for the city.
So I'm confused.
Up until August, what kind of restrictions would you have on somebody that...
Um, I mean, he will still be, uh, temporarily licensed as a law enforcement officer, so he can go out and do everything. Uh, once, uh, the sergeant and I feel comfortable that he can, uh, be out on the streets by himself, he, he'll be a fully commissioned officer. You know, there'll be some restrictions that I actually put on him that says, you know, "You will call myself or the sergeant under certain, uh, conditions," which probably that'll be basically the majority of it, just to protect him, to protect the city, to protect, protect myself.
Which I think Sheriff's Department's doing the same thing right now with their new hire.
Right, and I think that's typically, I mean, if we were a bigger department, you know, they, they would keep the, uh, person in field training, uh, until they went to the academy. But like I said, that's bigger departments. We don't have that luxury, so sometimes you, you know, I know the sheriff's department right now, I think they're too much tr- uh, training, basically, before they turn them loose. And that's kind of what we're, I'm looking at, uh, due to our, uh, call volume and, and things like that, so I want to make sure that they're comfortable, that we're comfortable, everybody's comfortable, so...
Okay. Yeah, I, I, that's what I was just wondering, if he can be out on his own until August, with these senate.
Yeah.
When you...
'Cause he'll have a, a temporary license through, through, uh, K L A T C, through the state, so...
Here, we have any more questions? Anyone like to entertain a motion to hire Octavio Gonzalez for a police department at fourteen dollars an hour?
So moved.
And I want that stipulation that he would sign that...
Yes, pending.
If he doesn't agree to it, then we can't offer him, is that correct?
We'll, we'll need a little time.
Well, I would just... I mean, I would just ask him if he would be willing to. I mean, give some type of commitment.
If you want, I can step outside and call him and, uh...
I think that's fine.
Ask him.
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta do that.
That way he can get this ball rolling and put it over the top.
So, John, can we just not?
You can send the, uh, motion?
And can we do our next question?
Just, let's just, let's do this. Let, let's do a contingent on him, um, signing, um, well...
Agreeing?
Well, the motion could just die down. There's no second on it.
Yeah, but the, the problem is, I don't know what form that kind of agreement's gonna take, whether you're looking at a year, council, does council want to do a year? It's 'cause it's gonna have to be approved by the mayor, so it's gonna have to be presented. Council's gonna do the, have to give the mayor permission to sign some kind of agreement like that.
A year would be, be started in August.
I was thinking a year after completion of the...
Class?
Yeah. The certification.
Because the, so, so the, you had to have consideration for that type of agreement, and usually the consideration is the employment, so if you're hiring somebody and then making them sign that contract later, there's no consideration at that time. And usually in those instances, we tell employers to offer that person a bonus, and if that person doesn't want a, a bonus, okay, and then, and we have no consideration for, for that contract. So then the other way of looking at it is, well, you don't continue your employment until you sign the agreement. But in this instance, you're talking about hiring somebody, then a week later requiring them to sign a non-compete agreement.
Well, I look, yeah, the best ways to do it, when, before they're hired.
At the time, at the time that they're hired.
At the hired.
You say that as a condition of employment.
This is a...
We want you to sign the non-compete.
Yeah.
What I'm saying here is, I haven't reviewed to see whether you can offer that as a condition. So I don't know if you want to wait a week to offer him employment, or are you gonna lose him in a week? Do we need to go in executive session and discuss him, whether he's worth waiting a week?
Waiting the two weeks.
He said next meeting is in, in two weeks, so... Like I said, he's available to start, start his training, but that's your clip to you guys.
Why, why don't you, why don't you do this motion to hire contingent on his approval of a, uh, a non-compete type of agreement to be worked out between him and council, or council, me and me?
You?
Me, me, I'm sorry, council for the city.
And you know what we're asking? That we want to get our money's worth out of him if he decides to go somewhere else.
I know, but what I'm saying is that I don't know what you want is legal until I have a chance to look at it. And so, it is, it is an agreement that if it is legal, then what we'll do is, is have to bring it back to council to review and give the mayor permission to approve.
And you're saying he can start pretty much right away, you're saying, right?
Yeah, he can start more, you, you know?
So, like, for your sake, it'd be nice to do it before the next meeting, so I mean, would we have to do a special meeting after you do your research?
No.
I, I'm not gonna have anything to you for a week and a half, I'm telling you now.
Okay, so...
This could be the reason why there's always been gentleman's agreement.
Or more discussion for the...
I prefer to think of it as a gentleman's...
So what was my motion?
Your first motion?
Yeah.
Move to hire Octavio Gonzalez at a rate of fourteen dollars? And then you guys started talking? So your motion was that?
That's what my motion is right now, still, to hire him at fourteen dollars an hour.
Second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Three one.
Is it still the direction of council for me now?
No.
No, okay.
Hi, I'm sorry.
So I don't need to offer?
Offering the job fourteen dollars an hour.
Are we, are we going to, are we hiring additional officers that we need to look at this for the future?
We'll, we'll look at it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you can still look into it for us. I, hey, for this one, I, I guess where I'm looking at it is, is we've been short, and I would just soon hire somebody and roll the dice.
The issue, those contracts are going to be enforceable, except where they're not enforceable, meaning that you have a right to sign any kind of contract you want, but the legislature at some point in the past may have said, "These types of contracts are not enforceable in this kind of situation." And, and that's what I don't know about. It just sounds like it's something that's probably been, that egg has been cracked before somewhere else, and, and there have got to be small towns that have dealt with this issue before. I just am not, I'm not aware of it.
And I can reach out to my contacts and see what they're doing, so...
And maybe you're just gonna hear, "Well, we've got these gentleman agreements that..."
I said, I, I know where I previously came from, we had a contact, they drew it up, and after they wrote it, the attorney that actually wrote it looked at it when it was filed, and they said, "We're wasting our time." But that was just on that one, so...
Okay.
All right, we do, is there a way you guys can still figure this out later, like?
I think you ought to look into it, but for that, Neil, I say just, let's go on down the road.
I can recite, I can recite to K L A T C, you see if they know.
Yeah, there's no reason to.